Discussion here in just a moment on self-funded employee group health insurance. And we're going to be joined a little later by somebody personally, and then also there's someone online with the video, and I'll let Cy introduce him when we get to that point. At this point, I'll entertain a motion as a motion to approve the agenda by Mr. Lawrence. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Glavine. Any discussion? All in favor? It's approved on a 5-0 vote. Brings us to the mayor's report.
No report.
Outstanding council report.
None.
Mr. Guines, Mr. Lawrence?
None.
I have none. Mr. Barrett, Mr. Glavine? None. Thank you, gentlemen. That brings us to the public agenda, citizens' comments. Is anybody on my left, your right, that wishes to comment before the council? Nobody. Anybody on my right, your left? Nobody. Anybody on the periphery of the room? Nobody. Thank you. That brings us to the policy agenda. If the clerk will read the resolution, please.
Resolution authorizing self-funded employee group health insurance with Maestro Health, Pro Act, and Mississippi Physician Care Network.
Okay, and the motion was made by Mr. Lawrence and the second by Mr. Glavine at the time for those keeping score at home. At this point, I don't know if the person we're waiting for is here yet. Mr. Easternling?
I do have somebody from Maestro coming in person. Hello. Okay. So I do have somebody from Maestro coming in person. Ashley Ross, she'll be here. She was supposed to be here at 9:45, but the weather and mechanical delays delayed her. She will be here probably within 10 or 15 minutes. So when she comes, she can answer any questions that you might have. But also, we have Brandon Wood, who is the CEO of Maestro. This is the company we had discussions about, and I just want to kick it off and throw it to Brandon if I could, to let him introduce himself. And if y'all have any questions for him, anything that you want to address with him, we can go there.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Wood, for joining us today online. Thank you, Cy. Go ahead, please, sir.
Yeah, thank you very much for having me. So I don't know if you can see me or not. If you can, I'll turn off my camera. Might make the sound.
You're good.
Okay, good. So thanks again. As was said, I'm the CEO of Maestro Health. I very much needed to try and get there this morning, along with Ashley, on the tail end of some needed time off. Sorry I couldn't be with you face to face. So Ashley and I spoke earlier in the week, and she said there was some general concern around some of the available online content. And so I thought I'd just spend a few minutes talking about how we run the business, our commitment to delivering service excellence, but then also dress kind of head-on some of the things that are available in the public eye in terms of commentary at Maestro, if that would be helpful.
Sure, go ahead.
Okay. So I've been running service businesses for about 25 years, and a lot of that time spent in the third-party administration business. And so we're not only perceived as the insurance company, but we're also perceived as sort of an agent on behalf of the employers that hire us, which is sort of an interesting position to be in. Our culture is one of continuous improvement. I'm not going to stand up here and tell you that we don't make mistakes. We do. But our general approach is that we own them 100%, and we work like heck to resolve them as quickly as possible. A lot of what is seen out in the public eye in terms of Maestro as an insurance company, I don't want to overgeneralize, but you can put them in a couple of buckets. And a couple of those are difficult for us to control as a company. So some of the comments around people not being seen by providers, those are related to plans that are essentially operating without a discount network. So the employer has decided that they're going to run without a network and reprice claims, usually at a multiple of Medicare, and they hire a third party to reprice those claims. So when you see commentary out in the public where somebody's struggling to get seen by a provider, those are supposed to be handled by the other third party the employer has hired to reprice the claims. So a couple of the Better Business Bureau complaints that were not closed out by Maestro were really the responsibility of the third party. Now, I will make sure that those are handled and that we take care of that, but that's essentially the root cause. Wasn't our decision for the group to run without a network, and that sometimes causes a little bit of an access problem for providers who already kind of know how that program works and don't want to participate. The other general category of complaints that are out there are plan rules themselves. So people who have flexible spending accounts and swipe a debit card at point of sale don't like having to provide a detailed receipt that the IRS requires after the fact. And so you'll see some complaints about that. There's not a ton we can do, but I'll tell you, we explore every avenue with data available to us to make sure we close those out without chasing people for receipts. So that's generally the commentary that both myself and our reputation folks have had to address online. And it's unfortunate. I'd love for nobody to ever complain, but there's some embedded pain points just based on the way that plans operate, whether it's employers who require that people certify that they don't have other insurance before they enroll in the group health plan, or providing detailed backup for an expense is just the nature of the beast, so to speak. Again, we are not perfect, but you've got my full commitment that should anything go bump in the night, we will work tirelessly to close it out and make sure it doesn't repeat. So just wanted to jump on for a few minutes to let you know, I'm committed to continuous improvement. And I think relative to our peers, by way of net promoter scores and our agent promoter scores, we're doing rather well. Never good enough, but we're doing well relative to our peers, and that's important to me. So thank you for the time. Soon, mayor and council are there, so I know you're busy folks, so I appreciate the few minutes this morning.
Thank you very much. We appreciate that.
Thanks for hopping on. And Ashley sent a text. She just pulled in, so hopefully she didn't get a speeding ticket, or maybe we have to get her out of that one. But she's pulling in now, so I think that we'll let her take any other questions that we may have, and let y'all have anything specific for. George?
Yeah, Mr. Lawrence?
How many companies do you represent, like the city of Biloxi? How many entities do you actually have under your wing right now?
How many groups do y'all have currently?
Yeah, like the city of Biloxi, moving to you just be something new for us. So how many groups you have like that under you already?
Municipal groups?
Yes, about 85 self-insured third-party administration customers, about 350 employer groups in total. On the self-funded TPA business, it represents about 35,000 total membership.
Thank you. Any other questions from council members?
Yeah.
Mr. Guines?
I Googled a rating. Could you give me the rating you guys have?
So the Better Business Bureau, I think at present, has a C-minus rating for three complaints that we did not formally respond to. Those complaints are relative to physician access issues associated with reference-based reimbursement programs. And so because we're the insurance company, essentially, in the perception of the member, those got tagged to us, but the reference-based pricing provider is the one who is supposed to respond to provider access issues. So we've tried to identify each of the members that posted, and I think Ashley is bringing with her some information in response to those. But it's my intent to address that rating because I'm not sure that those failure to responses are accurate.
And Ashley just walked in. Good intro.
Sorry, y'all.
Welcome.
That's okay. Thank you for joining us today.
Hi, Clay.
Ashley, appreciate it.
Hi.
Mr. Guines, did you have another question?
Yeah. The Mississippi Physician Network, are you accepted by the Mississippi Physicians Network? Do you know?
That's the network that we're utilizing for this. So I guess is your question referring to access and being able to access doctors and hospitals? Is that what you're in reference?
Yes.
Absolutely. I had the CEO tell me of Mississippi Physicians Care Network that you can think of it as a mirror image of Blue Cross. As far as the access, you have all the hospitals and virtually all the doctors. There may be one doctor that Blue Cross has that they don't. There may be another doctor, MPCN, has that Blue Cross doesn't. But you're looking at virtually a mirror image of the network that you have now.
Okay.
Good. Any other questions or comments for Mr. Wood at this point? Thank you, Mr. Wood. We appreciate you being with us today. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
If we could, I wanted to...
Glad of me. Hope to get an opportunity to meet you all face to face at some point soon.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I love the technological world we're in now. He's like three seconds behind us, and it's all part of it. So this is Ashley Ross. She works with Maestro as well. She's been our contact for this entire process. We've met with her in person and online. We've gone through this process with the insurance committee. So welcome. Thank you for coming. I'd like to get you to address the information that we handed to y'all. There were questions about things online that were said. Were they true? Are they valid? So their team found everything they could find, and they put it in this document and put what the resolution would have been, or if they could identify the member, what the actual resolution was. And then after that, if you want to talk about, I know the Better Business Bureau rating is an issue, so that's not one of the main reasons, or main things they use to rate themselves. It's the net promoter score. So I'm going to get Ashley to address that as well. But before I do that, do you know what your rating is, as the Biloxi City Council? Do you know you have a rating online? You have two reviews. You have a one-star review, where somebody was upset four years ago, and then you have a five-star review because the building looks pretty. So you can go look at yourself, but y'all are a three-star council. Just want to let y'all know that. But anybody can go online and place a review, but I do find that interesting that everybody has a review if you look for it. But come on, Ashley...
Cy, I would ask that you go and submit your review after this meeting for us.
It depends on how it goes.
All right. Thank you, Cy. Ashley, the floor is yours.
Yes, I appreciate y'all having me today. We definitely wanted to address this with everyone. We all know that, especially with the online forum 20, 30 years ago, the reviews weren't there. We knew exactly what was going on, and now someone who's upset at 10 o'clock and fine by 10:15 can go write a negative review. So I had my team poll all of our reviews on our website. We also did poll Blue Cross's reviews, and we're not here to make comments on anyone, but they have a lot of negative reviews as well. And so for us, our most reasons were in 2020. We do have a service that we are not administering for Biloxi, which is our FSA, HSA, HRA accounts. And so if it's not explained correctly to some of the membership, they don't always understand it. And so in this, on 10/8/2020, there's a flex spending account system, and it was difficult to submit expenses. Realistically, to submit expense, they need to have a copy of the receipt, make sure it's a legitimate expense, and submit it whether it's on the mobile app or online. We would have reviewed the member's account and interactions with members to determine what we had done to resolve the issue and provide any coaching with the advocates if we had failed to do something with an issue. As an outreach to the member, it would have been made to assist with logging onto the account, determine why they continue to have trouble, and providing education as needed. Our customer service are the same people that pay the claims, so they have a vested interest in staying online and talking to the membership through their issues. Technology issues, we just looked at it as Brandon Wood was on, and it's a three-second delay. There's always going to be technology issues, and our team does the best that they can to help ensure members get through the process. We had another review that the benefits card is a waste of money. Every time you need, they suspend your account, keeping your money or asking for detailed bill. The law requires us to have a detailed accountability of what they spend money on. If you take your credit card today and go to Target, you can buy whatever you want, right? However, if you take your FSA account or your HSA account, there are restricted items. You can't go buy shampoo on your FSA card. It's not an approved expense. So in this, we would have reviewed the members' interactions as well as history of transactions to make sure why documentation was there. Most often, we don't require documentation as we have the accounts that are set up to look at, is it a copay? Is it your deductible? But again, if they go and buy over-the-counter meds, we need to understand what they're paying for because we're legally responsible for that. We do follow that line very strictly. I have heard that we do require more documentation, in perfect honesty. However, not everyone, in my opinion, is upholding that law correctly. So we make sure we have what we're looking for. The next review is regarding reference-based pricing. They don't care about people and saving monies. We can't go to their hospital and use our insurance. This is not anything we're doing for Biloxi. This is reference-based pricing. That means they have an open network, and it means that physicians can decline the membership. And so that's not what we're doing for Biloxi. That's what their employer chose to offer them, to save costs. And in my opinion, I would not offer it to most anyone because it can be a lot of pushback. And so for that, we do outreach to the membership and make sure the provider has initiated conversation. We can negotiate the costs of it, but ultimately, it does create headache for the member. But that's not a Maestro Health issue. That is the plan that the employer has chosen to offer to their employees.
And remember, we spoke about this last time in the last meeting on Tuesday. We spoke about it a lot, but that was one of the things, was reference-based pricing, where the member gets upset because they were balance-billed for a claim, or they had to pay more than they should have. Well, that was the design that the employer picked. That's what they chose, and the TPA did exactly what the plan told them to do. So the TPA, Maestro, or whoever it is, takes a lot of flak for that, when in reality, they're doing exactly what they're supposed to do. It's your money, okay? You don't want to pay out more than you should as a planned sponsor. So they're doing exactly what they're supposed to do in scenarios like that, but sometimes they get flak from those examples.
Yep. Thanks, Cy.
Sure.
So the next one is about a member that had medical providers, had trouble with the insurance. There would have been a major expensive that they covered out of pocket. So we did poll this. It was a member that we spoke with their husband, and that was HIPAA-verified, and that the husband states the member is no longer with the company. They're half-Cobra with Maestro Health, and their coverage ended on 7/17/21 and now covered by Blue Cross of North Carolina. He states that he called Maestro Health Service Department earlier for assistance with some claim issues and had a request to refund for Cobra premium payment for half of the months of July since the end of 7/14/2021. The case manager provided education on how Blue Cross of North Carolina should have the care management program as well. He says that they have tried a contact number, but she has not had time to return the call yet. Case closed. We don't cover that member anymore, and we cannot return the Cobra fees. That is an employer's responsibility, should they choose to return Cobra fees. But once you're covered for the entire month, you're covered for the entire month. That's how Cobra works. And then they were at Blue Cross of North Carolina. We no longer have that member as coverage, so we can no longer assist that member through their healthcare journey. So that's as simple as a switch in coverage and lack of education because they are, in fact, on Cobra and not with their employer any longer. They were trying, the next one, trying to pay my bill, and no one can respond. It says at "Maestro Health Call Log" indicates that the customer service rep attempted to call back the member on 11/16/20, tried to call the member, and voicemail is full, so the member was sent an email. No additional communication from the member until 1/5/21, when the member called to discuss benefits. No mention of issues making payments. So if we reach back out to our membership, which we do, we re-record every single phone call, we reach back out to all of our members. If they don't return our phone calls, and they don't have a voicemail, or their phone number's disconnected, we cannot get in touch and work with them. It is ultimately on their responsibility to return our calls. We can only outreach so many times. Finally, the last one. I don't, horrible in every way. No one has ever heard of them. TPAs are different. You have an ID card. We label the ID card with City of Biloxi or any of our clients' logos to make sure it is recognizable. We also outreach to our providers. In this case, this was a reference-based pricing case again, something that we're not doing for Biloxi. We are paying claims through a network. The member can call, or y'all can call if you want, to a provider and say, hey, do you take the MPCN network? They say yes, and that's what they use. We're just paying claims and making sure we pay claims correctly. We didn't negotiate the network, nor do we want to. And so of this, we just have to make sure the membership understands what their insurance looks like, and then we do that education with you through open enrollment. And so some of the assistance through Jill and through whomever else is on the HR team, we educate those members and create custom pieces that have Biloxi's logo on it, educating those members and making sure they understand what their benefits look like today. The paying out of pocket. The next one is a member didn't understand that her fertility coverage wasn't covered. That is not a Maestro Health issue. That is the plan design that the employer put in place. With self-funded insurance, you can build your plan however you choose to. You can cover fertility. I have a new client that's covering laser hair removal for medical necessity. Those aren't common things, or you can cover gastric bypass. It is up to you as an employer what you choose to cover. For this employer, they chose not to cover fertility drugs or treatment, no artificial insemination, no in vitro. And so she did not understand and is upset because her company would not pay for that. That is simply our customer service for laying that message.
And y'all do not cover fertility drugs and that sort of stuff either. So that could happen here, where an employee gets upset that you're not covering something, then writes a bad review. City of Biloxi is horrible. Health insurance is horrible, you know? And it's nothing that you did, but they're upset. And so that's happening over and over and over, as you can see here.
Yep. Reference-based pricing is something I would never, especially with the city, I would never talk about doing, and I frankly don't talk about it with a lot of our clients because it creates some cumbersome processes. And so we're not looking at any of that, and that's what our negative reviews are. And as you can see, most of our reviews are from almost two years ago, and they are all really tied to reference-based pricing. We did have a claim, one in 2020, that the member called to discuss the spouse's claim, no PHI on file, and wasn't receiving bills or denying other insurance forms. So it was all issues with reference-based pricing and/or membership that we couldn't find.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Mr. Glavine.
A couple of things. Listen, I appreciate you coming here today. The committee has worked with you on a couple of meetings to get information. I appreciate you coming here today. One, a lot of people don't know who Maestro is, and that's not meant to be a negative. So we're not the only account that you have on the Gulf Coast or in this area.
No, we have clients from all the way we go from coast to coast that we have clients.
Are you able to disclose a few of, or is that...
So we can give you some of. We gave Union County, that's North Carolina. I can't disclose any that are here, that they did not give us permission to give us references today. And so we ask all of our clients for references, or if we can mention their name. But we have University of Texas Health System as a client. We have Dish Network as a client. We have Ingalls, which is in the Carolinas, is a large...
Not shipbuilding, but the grocery store.
Oh, yeah. The grocery store. We have City of New Bern. We have a number of other municipalities.
So one of the big questions, as we've looked at the plan, the plan appears that it's going to save significant money for the city of Biloxi. However, one of the things that is bubbling up at the top, and you've addressed several of the reviews, what kind of service are you going to give us? What is the communication piece with our team members? And what is your commitment that we have a person that we're able to pick up the phone or come to us when we have questions? Can you elaborate on those a little bit?
Yes, so you guys have a structured team. Cy and some of the others on his team and at Biloxi have already been working with that team. So the head-up of that team is a woman named Lindsay Hammond. She's based in the Dallas-Fort Worth, Texas area, and then she has a team below her that is your direct contact that handles everything to do with City of Biloxi. On top of that, we have a dedicated phone line just for the city of Biloxi, and we have performance guarantees in place. So our commitment is that if we do not meet those performance guarantees, you get money back from Maestro.
So we talked about in our meetings that the communication piece through text, through emails, through teledocs, for lack of a better word. Talk about that a little bit. I think that's important for the rest of the council that wasn't in this committee meetings. Talk about that service, because I think that was a little bit of a game changer as we met with HR and you and some of the council members.
We put together custom documents and custom pieces for each of our clients. So whether it's in your colors, just co-branded, we make sure that the verbiage actually reaches your membership. We all know that no two clients are the same, no two companies are the same. So we make sure that our information reaches your membership, and we put together, whether it's how to read your ID card, how to read your EOB, here's what the pieces we send to the providers. But we also reach out to the members where they meet and they best communicate. So we have created text message campaigns, email campaigns, snail mail campaigns, phone calls. However is best for your population, we create that for you with approval. Text messages are obviously opt-in only. And then we clear that with Cy and his team, and we then market it to your whole staff.
So a reminder of wellness checks or something like that could be a campaign that we could remind our city employees that, don't forget about your wellness check. And if we build an incentive into this program, we can remind them about those incentives so that they can earn credits or whatever.
Yep, so we can build up any incentives. We meet with our clients once a quarter, preferably in person, obviously non-pandemic times. But we have quarterly calls that are set up with HR, with finance, to make sure we're on track. And then we set up incentives throughout the year depending on which plans you have with us. And so it could be as simple as, hey, we have a step challenge this month. At the end of it, you get $25 gift card. We can create all of those things to keep your membership engaged and make sure that they are staying on a healthy path.
I've got one last comment I'd like for you to make a statement on. Why Maestro and not stay with our current company? Just give us your best reason why we shouldn't move.
Let's take money off the table, in my opinion, and I know we talked about negative reviews. We have the best customer service that I've ever experienced. Customer service should be table stakes, but it's not. We have the best team and the best source of members that are able to provide know-how, calm conversations, and direct the membership to exactly where they need to go. I've been doing this for 17 years, and I've never worked for a more engaged, people-friendly, tech-enabled place in my life. Everyone is genuinely interested in making sure the membership has a positive experience and gets them on a healthy track.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Glavine. Any other questions?
No.
Any further discussion at this time? Mr. Lawrence?
I have a question.
Okay. Yeah.
I have any questions? I guess, you know, when we first started this conversation on Tuesday, the concerns that I had was, you know, Blue Cross, Blue Shield, everybody knows who Blue Cross, Blue Shield is versus Maestro. And then, you know, the questions I had were coverages. I guess, you know, when we first started this conversation on Tuesday, the concerns that I had was, you know, Blue Cross, Blue Shield, everybody knows who Blue Cross, Blue Shield is versus Maestro. And then, you know, the questions I had were coverages, is this insurance going to cover the same things that we currently have, which you've answered that, the pre-existing, you know, if there's customers that had, that had been on Blue Cross, Blue Shield with us forever, by switching over, if they have this, or this, or this, they're not going to be, and there may be some kind of law now that, that doesn't allow that, but they're going, that condition would be covered. That was one of my questions, the reviews were one of the, the things that, you know, I saw online as well as, you know, some of the employees in the city brought up, the network being the same, y'all have answered that, so basically, the only issue that I still have, which isn't a Maestro issue, is the premiums and deductibles. And as long as we can, to, you know, make that something, I have no problem supporting this, as long as we, you know, can come to an agreement on the premiums and deductibles. So that's me, so.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. Mr. Guns, a comment or question?
As it's, as it's staying, what we moved in second, are we continuing with the employees at the same rates? That's, that's where my question is.
Well.
And are we doing two plans?
Well, really, we talked, we talked about a number of things at the last meeting, and to continue this discussion, the, the first issue is to be decided, do we change our third-party administrator from Blue Cross, Blue Shield to Maestro? It's the first thing we have to do. Because if we're, if we're not going to change, as I, you may recall, then we're going to lose out on some savings. And as, as the mayor pointed out, the savings are such that, that you, you forego that you might miss an opportunity to, to move forward on insurance, and we, we may get into that a little bit later, not right now, but the first issue is, do we want Maestro to be our third-party administrator? And I'll entertain a motion at, at this time if there's one forthcoming.
I move that we, that we move to Maestro.
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 Is that what we're supposed to be doing?
Sure.
Or do we need it? I'm waiting for y'all to finish discussing, we, we come to vote to change it, I have no problem doing it, I'll make the motion and do that, I just want to make sure they have all the questions answered that they was concerned about, Nation was concerned, and Phyllis was concerned.
Right.
The premiums, something else, we've got to handle that different, we have different options, we can look at that. Right now, the key is, there's any more questions for Si and Ashley?
I'll second the motion, but I think we need to continue the discussion because Mr. Guns brings up a good point. One, and the reason I'm seconding the motion is so, I think we meet the goal of saving a significant amount of money, then it comes down to a decision of the council to recommend what the premium, what the premiums would be for team members. We can weigh them all together and say, hey, it's no cost, we have that power if we wanted to.
True.
We can keep them the same, you know, or we can come up with what seems to be reasonable, add this wellness incentive, and actually, at the end of the day, it may wash or, or they actually come out ahead. So I, I do agree, it's two separate issues, Mr. President. One, do we shift to Maestro to save a significant amount of money on what the committee has recommended already? And then the second part is, what is the council's will to where those premiums need to be?
Now, as, as the clerk pointed out, we, we already have the motion basically in the resolution before us, so there's no motion necessary, really what we're trying to do is get a consensus at this point.
Then I withdraw my second, we can continue the discussion.
So we're voting strictly on switching.
No, no, Mr. Glavine withdrew his second, if Mr. Lawrence will withdraw his motion, all right? We already have that currently in the resolution that's before us, we mentioned, we named Maestro there, so what we're looking for now, we're, we're in the middle of discussion still, and we want to be sure there, there's a consensus on Maestro before we proceed to looking at what the employee contributions might be.
So when we vote, it will be, I'm on you, when we vote, it'll be all one resolution?
It'll be all one resolution, so right now, we're just trying to get a consensus on whether to use Maestro or not, and once, and, and, and once we decide what we, whether we're going to do that or not, then we'll start talking about the employee contributions, okay?
Couple of things.
Mr. Lawrence?
We have a program here, we're changing to y'all, we have a backup program here, you have a program like that in place somewhere else, where we can deal with y'all locally, Si.
I, I don't understand what you're asking.
No, what I'm saying is, we're always talking about email, talking on the telephone, doing, but we got you to deal with, we got, with Robin, Robin, okay? We can deal directly with them, like the fertility drug, you talk to them, they say it's not covered, it's not covered.
Right.
You can't make it covered, so you don't need to have a bad report when you say, no, you can't do that, so dealing with you and dealing with Robin, you shouldn't have some of these complaints. If you have a system in place like that, Ash, somewhere else, Ashley, where you have backups, we deal with them personally.
You deal with them personally, and you'll continue to deal with them personally, they are who we work directly with as well, and so our, what we call our client experience manager, she's the day-to-day contact that you guys all have direct phone numbers to, you can reach out to, but she's who Robin and Si would work with, and she's just over in Texas, and so she can be here as often as needed or not needed.
I'll just, I'll say that's.
Go through me.
Right.
You know, but they will have access on their card if they happen to call.
Robin, if you, if you would, just get close to a microphone so folks can hear you, thank you.
Yeah, they will be able to contact me, but like, they do have information on the back of the card, so once in a while, they may call that number, but anything that gets escalated, they definitely know how to reach me, my name, number, email is all over, all the information out there, so, and Courtney definitely knows to call me at any time that she needs me, so. They're not going to lose us at all for any kind of service.
So I just think that's a plus, because a lot of people like to deal personally, people not be in email or whatever, so we have that opportunity too, and you can save a lot of these complaints, because, I mean, hey, it's not in your insurance plan, it's not covered, pretty simple.
Sure.
You can holler all you want, it's not in there, you know, could you put it in there? Well, something you'd have to look at and do it, but right now, it's not covered, just using that particular one.
Well, and part of that is for us, is that we do want you guys to feel like it is a person, and that's one of the things I think we do differently as a TPA compared to Blue Cross, you, with having your direct line and your direct people to talk to, you talk to the same people, if they have a customer service, they form, a lot of our membership forms relationships with either customer service or their nurses, that their nurses are who they're working with frequently, so those with major conditions, they continue to work with that same person, and they know what's going on in their lives.
Thank you, I just wanted to let everybody understand, but we have a little extra connection to me personally, so that's a good thing. Going back to the motion, I know we're going to make a lot of changes coming, honestly, what you have on the table, I think we ought to just vote down and then start all over. Because you got stuff written in there, you got to change it, substitute it, change it, substitute it, to me, just kill it and come back and put a motion on the table to go with Maestro and a four-tiered system, that's what you really need to do today. That's just my opinion. Now, Peter, if he, he can figure that's the way to do it or not, because when you start taking an old resolution and add this, I mean, you got, got to make sure, so to me, just get rid of it, vote it down, and let's start all over. And then we have options he, the mayor wants to talk about, so don't come with pieces and changes, just kill the resolution, then we'll start all over. That's what I'm saying, put the right thing on the table, Peter? I got a mic, you can come up here, help us. That's just my opinion, you know.
I, I just want to chime in, there's mics coming up, I mean, we have a resolution, we, we kind of picked this date because we're trying to get this thing done, I understand what Mr. Lawrence is trying to say, it kind of muddies the water when you start amending, amended resolutions and all that kind of stuff, but, I don't know, I think, I think we got the gist of the, the insurance program, we know what the insurance program is, we now need to settle on if it's going to be two tiers, if it's going to, or four tiers, two options, and I think there's some other ideas that I heard today that we might need to discuss that might be fruitful as well, so, I understand what you're saying, Mr. Lawrence, and maybe it'll come to that, but perhaps we can make the necessary amendments and, and come up with a, a solution to that.
Mr. Barrett?
I agree, I meant, I believe, at this point, I, I think that, you know, everybody in the room knows if they're voting for or against Maestro to, to make the change, we pretty much agreed to go to a four-tier plan the other day, and so I don't know if we're going to have one or two options, and that's something that doesn't even have to be done today, but I think the only thing that we have to come up with is what our premiums and our deductibles are going to be for those four tiers. I think that's where we were the other day, and that's, that's where I'm at, at, at least for me.
All right, Mr. Guns, any thoughts?
Yeah, I'm, I do have, just like I said, they've answered the questions that I asked, am I satisfied? No, I'm not, but my biggest concern now is the tiers, the plans, and what the employees are, are going to face, so that's very, very important.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Guns, I, I'm kind of in the, the same perspective as Mr. Glavine and Mr. Barrett, and it is, with the current resolution, we have enough to work with and work through, we do need to, and I think just from the comments, unless I missed something, as Mr. Barrett said, I think we're pretty much agreed on Maestro, just from the comments that were made, and that being the case, then do we want to have a base option and a buy-up option? That was, I think, still a point of contention and may prove not to be a point of contention. We talked about the four tiers rather than just two tiers, and I, I think there was some agreement with that, is that accurate? I know Mr. Lawrence feels that way, Mr. Guns, on four tiers, I think you're in favor of that, I think, I think we're all in favor of that. That being the case, maybe we should move forward at this point and talk about what the member, the city employee contributions would be every month in each of those four tiers, so the mayor has something to offer.
I had a question, I think, you know, what I'm thinking.
Can I say something first, please?
Yeah, Mr. Lawrence.
We came here today to say we're going to change company and do a four-tier, period.
That's right.
We all said we discussed the rest later, so to me, we should put that in place, that we change into Maestro, and we're going to do it four tiers.
Maestro in four tiers.
Yes, right.
Is that all right?
And then you start dealing with, what else you can come with.
And deductibles, yeah.
But that was what we came here today to vote on, and that's what the resolution's supposed to be.
Right.
Four tiers, change into Maestro.
Right.
And that's what I think we should vote on now, and then bring up the, how we're going to handle the finances.
Mr. Barrett?
That was the reason for the meeting.
All right, Mr. Barrett?
I, I have a quick question, on the four tiers, we have the employee, employee spouse, employee child, or children, and then family, the employee spouse and child, does it benefit to have four tiers versus three financially? Because I know that you said there was something about.
Right, I mean, you could, so when you have, like, the children tier, you could have one child or four children, it doesn't matter, it's the same rate, so it's employee plus children. If you wanted to do a three-tier, you could do like employee only, employee plus one, or employee plus two or more, I don't recommend that, I don't see a benefit from that right now, you're giving your, you're giving your people four options now, something that best fits them.
Okay.
And what we're trying to do is, like I mentioned last time, you pay $143 some odd to the reinsurance company for a family unit, when that family unit is truly an employee spouse, you pay somewhere in the $90 range. So what we're trying to do by doing four tiers is to truly pay for what they're getting, save the city money where, where applicable, and give them better options.
Okay. Now, Mr. Law, Mr. Lawrence, I'll entertain a motion to see if there's a second to vote on Maestro and the four tiers, just four tiers right now.
I'll move that.
There's a motion by Mr. Lawrence that we approve Maestro as a third-party administrator, and that we have a four-tier system employee contribution.
I, I don't know if you need to put the language in there for Maestro slash Mississippi Physicians Care Network slash ProAct, because that's kind of the.
So we need to have all three in there?
Correct. I mean, we're talking about Maestro, but that's the package deal.
No, that's correct, that's a good.
Just a point of, point of language.
So that we would have as our third-party administrator, Maestro Health, ProAct for our pharmaceutical piece?
Yes, sir.
And Mississippi Physician Care Network.
As your network.
As our network. So there's a, a motion by Mr. Lawrence that we have four tiers, and those three, I guess, administrators, if you will, are networks, there's a motion by Mr. Lawrence to that effect, have I stated your motion accurately?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Is this a amendment? Is this voting on the original resolution? Is this a new resolution? Can you clarify, Mr. President? What we're doing here?
This would, this would be a new resolution.
Okay.
Is that correct? Clerk? Mr. Attorney?
Yeah, that's my, we're going to do it to old.
Let me, let me see the old resolution, or the.
Yeah, I think the resolution before you had, had blanks, is that right? What was being passed, had blanks to be filled in or voted on later?
That's correct.
I defer to our insurance person to see if that's what, if, if this, if the wording of this resolution is what's being.
So, my understanding is the resolution as amended is exactly what y'all are talking about right now, except for, there are blanks in here for what we're charging the employees. What you're proposing is that we approve this as it is, and there's still blanks for what we're charging the employees, so we're going to have that discussion later, so I, I guess you're approving it as is, and contribution amounts are TBD.
Okay.
That's my understanding.
Thank you. Point of clarification, then, just to be sure we all understand, basically, the motion that Mr. Lawrence has made is currently what we have in front of us, because we don't have any employee contribution rates in here, we have Maestro, and we have the other, I guess, providers or carriers.
Need a new motion, I mean, we're.
No, we, we don't, okay, so, so at this, at this point, the only, I understand it, at this point, if we approve what we have in front of us right now, the four tiers and those providers, we approve this, but there's still information lacking in this resolution, right, Mr. Attorney? Those are the blanks, now.
Yeah, I'm thinking it's just part of this, you might amend the resolution only to say that the, the blanks will be filled in by certain date, or, you know, it will be, or is that going to be also voted on today?
Well, what, what I, what I don't, what I don't know is, I don't know when the administration has to have these figures in those blanks to set everything up to be ready for the open enrollment, which is scheduled three weeks from now? Yeah?
Today would be good, today would be good, but, you know, that's.
Right. Right, okay. So, so it sounds like we're all on the same page with the resolution before us, we just need some discussion on what numbers to put in the blanks, correct? That's where we are.
That's correct, so it doesn't matter if we vote on this like it is, and we come back and amend it 20 minutes later, we're essentially doing the same thing.
It doesn't, and there's, then.
This is all he needs to get engaged, right?
Right, this is, this is what Si needs to get going, but then you've still got the personnel office trying to line up things so that they're ready when employees come through to make their decisions in a few weeks. So, that being the case, I, I didn't, didn't hear a second, yes, Mr. Lawrence?
Just one question, we're supposed to be voting on, I don't see why it says four tiers in there.
It has four different contribution amounts, employee single of blank, employee spouse of blank, employee children of blank, and family of blank, that's the four tiers.
So when you pass it, you pass in the four tiers and change it to the three companies?
Yes, sir.
You want to make sure we got it all right, you know, that's what I don't like, I'm commending all these things.
So if we're still in discussion, can I throw some ideas out, or maybe what?
I'm sorry, can you?
You want to make sure we got it all right, you know? That's why I don't like...
Okay, we are.
I'm commending all these things.
So if we're still in discussion, can I throw some ideas out, maybe what...
I'm sorry, can you throw some?
Can I throw some ideas out on the...
Sure, please, anybody, go ahead.
This is what I would propose. We keep the employee, I think this is the consensus, keep the employee at 50, employee and spouse at 100, employee and child at 90, and maybe employee and family at 125, with the understanding that we build in that wellness incentive, that they're going to get some credits back, you know, to offset, you know, maybe the full family tier. Now, the mayor had a suggestion you want to elaborate on?
Yeah, no, those contributions, the blanks can be, we don't have to rush through that right now. Basically, Cy needed to get engaged to make sure things happen. I'm all in on what, you know, I've got data, and I've done some arithmetic on those specifics. And we have options, as I said, you know, basically, based on the population of employee, you know, I think you brought those, you know, we can make everything the same, no impact to the employee, and just cost us, you know, 372,000.
372,000, I think you said earlier.
And again, the opportunity to save 600 to 800 offsets anything we would choose is, we've got a lot of flexibility on, we want to keep our current employees and don't harm them in any way, financially or anyway, keep the $1,000 deductible, but new employees, which we will, you know, I think we need to look at in detail, new employees at $2,500 deductible, we've got a chunk of money that we actually have, that 7 million that go out of our pocket every year. How much? It falls between 1,000 and 2,500. But there would be no direct impact dollar-wise for our employees, but I think new employees, which we get about 10% per year, you know, will be in a more reasonable situation and still be way below other folks. So immediately, no impact, same coverage, better coverage, better opportunity to save, and then put the, you know, the healthness, health opportunities and gift cards and some of these other things we're talking about. I think the main, I'm in agreement with, you know, let's get Cy what he needs to get engaged, and we, you know, we can hammer out an acceptable for our 627.
So we would have, basically what you're saying, Mayor, we'd have a grandfather plan?
Well, no, we'd actually kick your payroll up to match any new contributions, if it was 65 and 195 spread out. So, and it would be zero impact. You know, your folks are going to live the same way, you know, the same deductibles and the same opportunities, but anybody new comes on board, going to 2,500.
I like that. I like that.
Their premiums would be the same.
Premiums would be like as if they were to buy in. That's what I said, this is the first we've discussed of just the shooting from the hip. We don't need to, you know, determine that right now. You see where I'm coming from?
I see where you're going, and there's going to be certain laws applicable of, you know, if you're offering two plans, you need to offer it to everybody. Everybody needs to have the same option of being on both plans.
It really would be one plan. This is the thing, but the people, current boys will match their additional expense for the one plan.
Right. But you're also talking about offering a $2,500 deductible as well?
No, for new employees.
Just for new employees.
So anybody that's currently an employee of the city of Bel Air would have a $1,000 deductible, new hire, anybody that isn't in part of this enrollment would be 2,500?
Well, yeah, and again, this is a plan, okay? But that's what I said, we've got a lot of blanks to discuss. I know what our numbers are right now. I don't know what's going to, you know, but basically, there's some chunk of money of that 7 million that goes out of our pocket is going between 1,000, you know, deductible and 2,500. And then over the course of time, we've replaced 10% of our employees per year, you know. You know, this benefit is like, you know, a raise to the existing employees. You're going to get, you know, a number of things by going to this plan and Maestro, plus our, you know, reducing that million, you know, we out of pocket a million plus, you know, whatever it is, or not a million, 7 million, but we could get, you know, at least 800,000, or maybe 600,000 to 800,000 of it back.
I agree with you, man. I think when you leave the employee that's employed now the exact same, don't cost them a penny different.
That's it.
Leave that alone. Like you said, new employees come into a different system.
I think we could, we take some time and massage that option. I just, you know, going to go four tiers of some, a plan of some definition, if it's legal, well, of course, it'd be good. But, you know, that's what I would say. If it were my business, okay, and I've run, you know, a couple of them, that's what I would do.
Right.
So we'd hope it'd be legal, so.
It's y'all's plan, y'all can design it however you want to.
Yeah, we don't need to do it right now, because you, nobody, you know, I got a lawyer back there can't tell me if it's legal, but it's an idea, right? Makes dollar sense.
So for right now, what we do is we pass it, four tiers, current pricing for everybody, $1,000 deductible, premium stay the same, basically.
Well, we don't have to, the nuts are both, we don't have to determine it right now, do we?
Well, not for me, not for us to move forward with Maestro and get that process going. We've kind of already started the ball rolling, and we'll continue that going. But for Jill and for open enrollment and for the employees, they got to start getting documentation together. They got to start getting the backend systems together and getting the pricing in there. So when you talk about keeping everything the same, are you talking about going to four tiers?
Four tiers, yeah.
Okay. What rate would be, are you talking about rates or not? We're not talking about rates yet.
Well, this is what I would do. I would act like everybody on the thing would go to, go to a, you know, buy-up plan.
Sure.
Okay. If they were to go to buy it up, it'd cost them $15 extra a month if you're just employee only. I'm putting that $15 back in their payroll.
Okay.
Okay? If you choose to go employee spouse, okay, you're paying $100. Okay? The difference is, and this is the population based on account, that extra finance that I would pay them is total to $372,000.
Right.
Okay? I, you know, this Juggers Lab understands, we got an opportunity to make 600,000 by this move and maybe 800,000, and it only cost me 372,000 to offer the same thing to all of our employees. No difference to them, right? No difference to the end user.
But that 372 is going to be covered by the city?
Yeah.
And so there's no cost at all to all the employees?
Right. If you're employee only, you're paying $50 a month.
Right.
But you're going to pay $65 a month, but you're going to get $15 more in your payroll.
Right.
But why even do it? That's just an extra step. I mean, just charge them $50.
No, because we got one set of, if you're employee only, employee spouse, so a new employee would be by these new numbers at 2,500.
Okay.
Okay?
Gotcha.
I didn't explain it to him either, so.
Surprise.
Mr. Gines, question?
But I want to, I'm trying to reduce that margin that comes out of our pocket, 2,500 versus 1,000, just on our own, it's a bunch of money.
Thank you. Mr. Gines, go ahead.
Okay. Basically, what I'm hearing is, what we have on the table right now, of course, your motion was nullified because it's the same thing, correct?
Yeah, there was no second, so we're dealing with the original motion.
Okay, gotcha. Okay. And the other thing, the other unrededgedness I have is, if we pass this here on this with the four tiers blank, will it come back to the council to fill in the blanks?
Yeah.
That would be my question.
Yes.
All right. So let's take a moment, take a breath, because we were talking about, A, Cy is fixing to get all the information he needs to do his job, thanks to Ashley visiting today. All right. So that's good for Cy and Ashley when they leave today. Jill in Human Resources is dying to set all this up so everything's ready to go in three weeks when employees come through, so she can't do any of that until she hears what these employee contributions are going to be for each of these four different categories in this four tiers. Is that accurate, Ms. Paul? It is. So, yeah, we can leave here today, and Cy will be happy, and Jill will be left holding the bag until we meet again to talk about what are these contributions going to be monthly from the employees. And of course, we don't meet again for another 10 days. As Cy would point out, the calendar's peeling away one day at a time. So there's one thought that comes to mind, because Mr. Glavine had mentioned for employee only, $50, for employee and spouse, $100, for employee and child, $90, and for employee and family, $125. All right? And then hanging out in the breeze, a loose end is this wellness incentive, which, depending on what that amount would be, for example, let's say it was 25 bucks a month or $300 a year. So if Mr. Glavine at 125 a month gets his family on that particular tier, and then he meets all his wellness requirements, and he gets a $300 check or card, basically, Mr. Glavine paid, what, 1,500 for the year, but he got a $300 check, which puts him back to paying just what he paid for this year, that 1,200. So, yes, Mr. Mayor?
I'm all for examining every option, and wellness included. Cy mentioned a little bit of something about, you know, basically, go to Maestro, okay, that's settled. Then determine the rates of existing folks, and we have some opportunity to put the new hires in a bracket that I'm talking about, so any new hire comes along January 1. It gives you another little room, more room to plan.
I was suggesting, if you want to do the second plan option for new hires, start at January 1. All new hires owner after that date can only get on this plan for whatever rate y'all decide.
So right now, we're just looking at the, basically, option, the same option we have now, but the new...
Don't need the dollars now, right now, of the existing four. You don't need to put the dollars in today, is what I'm trying to say.
I don't, but Jill would like it.
Right.
Who?
Apollo, I'd like to call for the question on...
I'll give it to her.
Go ahead, Mr. Lawrence, go ahead.
I said, we're voting on four way, the moving to the old three companies and four tiers. The rest will hammer out.
That's right.
Up or down?
Whatever you want to do, let's vote on that, and then go to the numbers, whatever you want to do later.
Okay. And that, I agree. That motion, that motion was made by Mr. Lawrence and seconded by Mr. Glavine. That's the motion before us. That does everything we set out to do today except fill in the blanks, and I believe that addresses Mr. Gines' question, when are we going to fill in the blanks? So unless there's further discussion, I'll call for the question. Yeah, we can. Peter, we can leave those blank, can we not at this point? Or do we need to add an amendment that we will fill them in?
Let's set a deadline by when those numbers will be filled in.
Say that first Tuesday. We meet? When they have to be?
We meet two weeks from now?
Two weeks. She'll have one week.
Wait, just a moment. Let me talk to the people who are going to be doing the heavy lifting here. If we don't approve this, if we don't, if we...
Like Jill said, y'all are on an online system.
Yes.
Y'all are on an online system, plus we have to let the employees know. So we've got to get those numbers as soon as possible to be able to get everything set up and the employees notified of the changes that are coming. So we can't wait two weeks, especially if we're doing the 13th enrollment, plus all this goes into effect 10-1. So we've got to get employees this information as soon as possible.
Next Tuesday?
So what's wrong with the 500?
It's okay.
Okay.
All right. So I'm trying to listen and understand. So did I hear that next Tuesday, a special meeting to set these monthly contribution rates? Is that what I'm...
It's fine.
Okay. So let's go ahead and dispose of the resolution before us. All in favor of Maestro and the four-tier system, which is stated in the resolution?
Okay.
All in favor? All opposed? All right, it's approved on a 4-1 vote. At this point, now that we've got that out of the way, Cy's happy, Ashley's happy, Jill's not quite even approaching happy. All right? All that said, will we schedule a meeting next Tuesday? And what time next Tuesday would you like to meet?
1:30.
What?
1:30?
1:30, I think, yeah.
Yeah, 1:30.
All right, I'll, we'll go ahead and have a special meeting next Tuesday at 1:30, and the purpose will be to, I guess, establish the monthly employee contributions for insurance. Go ahead. Yes, ma'am. Get to a microphone. Microphone, thank you.
If we have the information for the dental life envisioned, can we add that to the same agenda so that we can go ahead and address it also?
Sure, I don't have a problem with that. So add dental and vision insurance to that carry, if you would. All right.
One thing I'd like to just shoot out here, it has nothing to do with the insurance. I think we took care of that. I'd like to ask the mayor to look at 3% raise for employees, what that would do to our budget, to get that information to her as soon as he can, to put it on the table, a 3% raise for all the employees since 2016 that had not received any additional money or funds or raises, to see what that would cost, how many people that would take in.
I'm sorry, I was talking to insurance.
I said I'd like for you to look at a 3% raise for all the employees since 2016 that had not received any raises, additional money. There's probably quite a few of them. I would just like to see if you put that into the budget, what that would make our budget look like.
We can do that. We can examine that.
All right. Thank you.
Cool. Do you need a motion on that? It wasn't too painful.
Okay. All right. So we're scheduled to meet next Tuesday at 1:30. We'll talk about employee contributions, dental and vision. That's Tuesday, the 31st, I believe, of August at 1:30. Okay? There being nothing further in this meeting, stay tuned, because we've got another meeting. Okay. That adjourns this meeting. We'll immediately open, open a new meeting. That motion to accept the agenda, right? Oh, sorry, we need a motion to adjourn. Motion by Mr. Lawrence and a second by Mr. Glavine. 12:19, okay.
In favor? Even losing... Call with a G. I'm with you. I'm with you. Very good. Yes.